Good morning, everybody, and welcome to the Spokane City Council Study Session for Thursday, September 1st. And we're actually having a specially noticed legislative meeting. So I'll ask Ms. Pfister to call the role.
Council President Beggs.
Here.
Councilmember Bingle.
Here.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Present.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Present.
Councilmember Stratton.
Here.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Present.
Councilmembers Oppone.
Here.
Let the record reflect that all council members are present.
All right. Thanks. I just wanted to note that some of us and several council staff people were at the Symposium on Homelessness earlier today. Other people were at the Homeless Coalition. People were dividing and conquering, and people are active in the community today. And so lots to think about there. We are going to have a kind of more traditional study session topic on the budget in a little bit from Matt Boston. But before that, we have a resolution before us. But in order to consider it, we would need a motion to suspend the rules because it was recently just added.
Motion to suspend the rules.
Second. Okay. Any discussion about suspending the rules? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Nay?
Nay.
No.
Okay. Any extensions? All right. The rules are suspended. Is there a motion to add Resolution 2022-0079 to today's agenda?
So moved to add?
Second. Any discussion about the motion to add to the agenda? All right. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Nay?
Nay.
No.
And any extensions? Okay. It's five to two. It's added to the agenda. And then just by way of background, on this resolution, we had an extensive meeting, an executive session, to discuss real estate earlier this week. And since then, we've been advised by our real estate broker that time is of the essence to submit a potential purchase and sale agreement in order to keep our options on the property available. And so I worked on this particular resolution that would ask the mayor to consider the draft purchase and sale agreement that's out there, modify it as she wishes, and sign one below the listing price that would also provide for a 90-day feasibility study so we could see whether this works for the city courts and public defenders and prosecutors, community justice folks, and/or the police. And financing and all those questions that are out there would give us a 90-day window that we could, in our judgment as council, if it was not feasible, we could walk away from the agreement and get our earnest money back. And so that's the resolution. The way it's structured is the mayor, who's requested an additional week, would have till 3:00 next Thursday to sign or decide not to sign. And then after that point, the city council president could sign or not sign based on the authorization of this resolution. And that's per two provisions in the city charter. One, that gives council the right to acquire or dispose of real property. And also, there's a provision on signing contracts for the city that the mayor can sign, or the council president, if authorized by a majority of the council, which this resolution would do. So that's kind of procedurally where we're at. I'll open it up for any discussion on the resolution.
I have a question.
Councilmember Stratton.
So if the mayor wants, if the administration sits down next week, goes through it, and wants to make modifications, does that then have to come back to council for a vote?
No. So this resolution intentionally does not endorse a specific purchase and sale agreement.
Okay.
It just says a purchase and sale agreement below the list price and with a 90-day feasibility. Those are the only things. So in terms of the actual terms, there is a draft one that's out there that the administration has had for a while now. But they, if they want to be the driver on it, they could work with our attorneys and do that. And if they really don't want to have any part of it and turn it back over to council, it's, we don't have to do anything more than have me sign it at this point. But, so yeah, so it doesn't have to keep coming back and forth for minor changes to the contract.
Okay, thank you.
If there were actually going to be a completion of the purchase, there would have to be a special budget ordinance to authorize that down the road. Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah. So in an informal conversation with the county, they really have no plans to use the municipal court space for SPD. So I'm just curious, what is the plan to house them once we evict them from the Gardner Building?
So we don't have a plan to evict them at this point. That's what the feasibility study process is for. That's just one component of it. That Gardner Building is the municipal court's building. It was purchased for them, and so that is an asset that they have to help them get the space they want. But again, that's all part of the, this just gets us in the road of that feasibility actively there. But it locks us in at a very good price, in my opinion, and the opinion of our real estate broker. So we're locked into that, and we can do that planning. We can do that community engagement piece, and really, community engagement for the whole city, because it not only impacts where it is, but it impacts anyone going to it. So that's what this does. It's written in a way that gives us the opportunity at a locked-in, very good price to consider all those things.
Well, just had, I really can't just oppose this enough. I mean, I think at a time when we're, if not about to be in a recession, perhaps in a recession, with a budget that is just absolutely underwater, if we're going to sell assets, we should be using those revenues to harden our budget and protect ourselves from what's coming, not buy more fancy buildings. So I just, I can't support this. There's been zero public engagement. Not one neighbor's been asked how they would feel about a day jail, whatever that is, being in their backyard. So no, absolutely not.
And just, I'll just say, there's not a plan for a day jail in the thing. There is a day reporting, which is not a jail. And, but, my, you know, I totally respect your opinion on it, and that's great. That's why we vote on it. But just, all this commits us to is to study it and do the public engagement. It does not lock us into doing it.
Yeah, I just wanted to confirm.
Kinnear.
Councilmember Cathcart is objecting because there isn't public engagement, but the 90 days is to give us that time for public engagement, correct?
It is. And it's always a challenge when you're trying to negotiate real estate and public engagement on it, if you don't already own the land. Because if you announce something, well, you'll see something like we did on the Trent Shelter, where we announced it, and suddenly the price went way up once it was in the thing, and that was our choice. So you want to lock in your price there, and then do your public engagement. And then we still have every option to go or no-go, based on what we hear from the public and the county and everything else. But that is the tricky thing with real estate purchases. Councilmember Bingle.
Yeah. I understand that we can get something. So first off, I don't deny that this building is needed or necessary for something. I don't, I don't think that there's, I mean, we could probably look at any city agency and say, you know, hey, they need more. They need more space. They need more parking. They need all these things. I don't, I don't deny any of this. I don't deny that, you know, even safety might be a concern for many people. I don't, I don't deny any of that. And that, that could very well be the case. And this could be, you know, locking us into a very good price. And again, I don't deny that. But the trouble is, is that we're in a situation where, again, financially, this is going to be, this is going to be a real hardship for the city. It's going to be a real hardship for the taxpayer. You know, when we're talking about the purchase of the building, it's not just the purchase of the building. And then there's going to be, you know, significant tenant improvements that need to be done, and all kinds of stuff. To where financially, this is going to be, this is going to be really difficult for the city, considering the position that we're, that we're already in financially. And thankfully, right after this, our, Mr. Matt Boston is going to be sharing with us the state of the city and some budget thoughts. And so I guess, you know, we'll get to see a lot more of that. But one of the other things that I have a real problem with is, again, you know, talking about public engagement, you know, I think we've made clear our troubles with, you know, the way that we're talking about public engagement and certain facilities and all that kind of stuff. I think it's, I think there's a double standard in a lot of ways, and I think it's a very evident double standard. But I think, again, when we're talking about community impact, we have the Trent Shelter that's going to be opening, I think, today in East Central. This is going to be another high-impact facility that affects that neighborhood. And we constantly talk about how that neighborhood has been left behind. It's constantly forgotten. And yet, we're, you know, again, after we've been talking about a high-impact facility for a very long time, and that one is very much on the pathway forward to drop another high-impact facility in that neighborhood, I think is going to be, is going to be a lot for that one neighborhood to shoulder. I mean, we've seen the reaction from the West Hills, and we've seen what happens when neighborhoods are afraid that too many are going to be put in there. And the trouble is, is that East Central has a third very high-impact facility, that is that Wash Dot Camp. And I think that the, those neighbors are just being asked to carry too much. And so while there might be very good reasons to do this, I think there are also very good reasons, and in my opinion, more compelling reasons to oppose this. And so I'm going to be opposed. Again, I don't, I don't deny that we need these things, and I would, I'm interested in pursuing those, but I think this neighborhood, I just don't think it's the right location for it, so.
You know, those are going to be exactly the type of questions in the 90-day feasibility to see. There's all sorts of impacts of that for the community, including the eastern side of Spokane. There'd be free parking likely at court right now. You have to pay for park. You have to go all the way over to West Central and pay for parking and that. So that's what we're going to hear. And the idea is to do that, and is to actually have formal public meetings about it and get that impact. So I think those are all the great questions. Again, all this resolution does is it locks us into a really good price, and it sets the clock ticking for us to actually do the work that probably should have been done years ago. I forget when we started municipal court, 2008, 2009? 2009. This, this was supposed to have been accomplished long ago. The Gardner Building was maybe one idea, and this just gets us off the dime to do it.
Right.
And I totally look forward. I talked to Mr. Tracy on my way here, and he said, well, can we meet with the Budget Committee again about this? And I'm like, yeah, that's, that's all part of the thing. So this isn't the, it's done. It just locks the price so that we can do it, and it makes us get down to business and make those tough decisions.
Yeah. And I hear what you're saying, but, I mean, we've allocated $5 million of ARPA dollars. I don't know if there's a greater signal we can be sending that this is happening. And so, you know, while today might be a discussion, I think it's somewhat misleading to say this isn't about it, because, I mean, that's very much the direction this council is heading. And so I hear what you're saying. That might not be the exact purpose of this particular resolution, but that's the exact purpose of this council.
Yeah.
And so I think we should just be honest about what we're trying to do.
Well, and just to acknowledge, I think it's the direction a majority of the council is headed, but not absent public input. Because what we're basically saying is, we're going to go further down that road, but create a big space for public input. So that, that's all I'm saying, is that we're not bound to it. I agree with you. I think if you talk to each of the council members, the majority would say, no, this is best for the city. But we're not locked into it, I guess, is the point I want to make to anyone who's watching. Councilmember Stratton.
And I just want to be very clear. I'm being very honest in supporting this resolution, because I have been at City Hall a long time. With Howard, it's been 10 years. This conversation comes up over and over and over again. And so to me, the timing couldn't be worse, but at some point, we have to take a risk and say, if this is a great offer, if this is something that we can move forward finally, after listening to employees and judges and the community, you know that people in West Central, they're complaining about parking because there's so much going on over there. People are parking blocks away just to get into the courthouse, right? So, I mean, to me, I'm, I'm very honest in this vote. And, and there, I haven't kept anything from anybody, but I do know the frustration. I've felt it for 10 years, and it's time for that group of municipal court employees and those associated with it. We've moved them somewhere where they can, you know, continue to do the good work they do, grow in the work that they do, and be proud of where they work. And so I'm all for this. I'm sorry about the timing, and I would love to be involved in future discussions and how we're going to move this forward. Thank you, Howard, for doing this. It's been a frustrating 10 years, and I'm sorry that this great deal came up now when probably the worst time, but it's worth us, I think, after what I've seen in those 10 years, it's worth us to move this forward, to have those discussions, to get out there and talk to people, and to take the risk to do this. Thanks.
Councilmember Bingle.
And, and I totally understand, you know, employee safety concerns and all that. I, again, I think that they should have a safe place to work. I just hope that we continue to apply this same exact logic to groups like the police who are working under black mold, who are working in unsafe working conditions.
Absolutely.
And so, you know, I appreciate the urgency that we have now to explore employee safety concerns. What I don't want to have happen is that we apply this logic to one group of people, and then this same, this same exact situation comes up with a separate group of people. But I'm sorry, that's not compelling enough for me to move in this way. And that's, I guess that's my frustration, is that I just continue to see us with, again, I think, good reasoning for these things moving forward, but inconsistently applied to different aspects of the city. And I just, again...
Just so you know, that those conversations, as we talked about, municipal court, have been ongoing with the police department as well. Years ago, I've had conversations with Craig Mydl about their facility and the problems there. In fact, at one point, we were actively looking for sites. One was that Normandy.
Right.
Area. So they have not been left out. And if, if the same opportunity came for the police department, I would absolutely move that forward and support it.
Councilmember, can you raise your hand first, and then Councilmember Cathcart?
And, and, I'm going to echo what you just said. It's just a lot of conversation for one vote. The police turned down a good facility. And Councilmember Stratton's right. We've been working on this for a long time, and they turned down a really good facility, just did not pursue it. So if something else comes up, absolutely. To tell us or accuse us that we're not applying that same lens is blatantly false, because we have been working with Craig, trying to get them out of the situation they're in. But at some point, police have to actually pull the trigger and say, yes, let's go, let's do it. And that hasn't happened.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah. So I don't know what that facility was. That might not have been when I was here. But frankly, the conversation around this Primera Building could be around putting SPD in that building, and that's not. So certainly, you know, the priority is not SPD. It's the courts in this conversation. And so if we do want to look for alternatives for SPD, well, I mean, perhaps the Primera Building is it. Now, I'm not saying it should be. I'm not saying that it's in the right location. But if that's the priority, if we are truly looking for something for SPD, well, why not this?
And just so you know, that's part of the feasibility study that we talked about. And, I mean, Chief Mydl has told me that he didn't want any part of it before. He's like, no, we're out. We don't want to share it. We don't want to do it. He may change his mind and say, no, I want to be considered. But that is part of the feasibility study. That is contemplated. So that's, and as these two council members have said, we have tried to include police in that, and...
And advocate for themselves.
There's, you know, there's a lot going, they got a lot going on and different things, but it is not choosing one over the other. This, based on the study from the U.S. Marshal in terms of safety, this seems to be the most urgent. And all these departments are ready to go, and police has asked not to be considered for either sharing it, and at one time, for even considering it because of where its location is, which is their prerogative. But they are included and will be concluded going forward. All right. I wanted, Ms. Allers reminded me that we did, even though there was very short public notice on this, we did have the opportunity for people to sign up for public testimony today, like any legislative meeting. Perhaps due to the short notice and lack of media coverage, nobody did sign up, just so, so people know there's no testimony on that. Was there any other testimony before we go to a vote?
Excuse me. I need to read this in full before we vote.
Thank you, Ms. Pfister. Please read it in full.
Resolution number 2022-79, a resolution authorizing the city of Spokane to sign a purchase and sale agreement for the purchase of a building to be used as a municipal justice center. Whereas the current spaces occupied by the city of Spokane Municipal Court for Courtrooms and Administration are inadequate and unsafe for employees and the public, and there are no opportunities at the current county campus to upgrade them. And whereas there is an operational and safety need to combine as many employees as possible from the various departments engaged in the municipal court system closer together. And whereas, if I point acre property for sale at 3900 East Bragwood meets the needs outlined above and includes existing furniture, emergency generators, security hardware, and surface and covered parking. And whereas this property is currently accepting offers, and the city must act quickly at a price per square foot plus furniture below those prices typically available in Spokane, in order to secure as a potential location, the municipal court and other city services at a substantial long-term cost savings for the city. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor of Spokane is authorized to sign a purchase and sale agreement below the current listing price, with at least a 90-day feasibility study contingency, and negotiate the purchase, negotiate the purchase, the identified property on East Brag immediately with the following funding commitments. $5 million of the total cost to be paid for using American Rescue Plan funds and the remaining amount of the total cost paid via a SIP loan to be repaid by leaseback payments from the seller. The potential sale of two city-owned buildings, 909 West Mellon and 1427 West Gardner, currently used by city personnel and future criminal justice assistant sales tax proceeds. Be it also resolved that this new property includes plenty of office space, updated furniture, and secure covered parking, and will be used as a municipal justice center and the permanent workspace for all court personnel, public defenders, and prosecutors, as well as significant number of other criminal justice and city employees and other organizations providing services to community members. Be it further resolved that upon acceptance of the purchase and sale agreement and prior to the expiration of the 90-day feasibility contingency, the city shall conduct a formal public input process across the city and within any impacted neighborhoods regarding the relocation of municipal court and related city services to the proposed new location. Be it finally resolved that if the mayor has not signed a purchase and sale agreement by September 8, 2022, at 3:00 p.m. pursuant to the Spokane City Charter, Spokane City Council President is authorized to sign the purchase and sale agreement for the aforementioned property below the current listing price with at least a 90-day feasibility study contingency.
All right. Any further comment? Prepare to vote. All right. That passes five to two. And we'll adjourn our legislative session and go back to regular study session, and invite up Matt Boston. Thank you, Ms. Pfister.
Are you going to be switching back and forth between this and your spreadsheet?
Uh, I don't think so. Not, not in the beginning. I think I'll go through it, and that'll be kind of at the end. Why? Is that going to throw you off?
Oh, I was just going to share screen instead of this app, if that was the case.
Oh, okay.
But that works.
Nope. So I'm just going to start off by, I mean, just to recap, we're, what we're trying to do here is, is look at what we're trying to accomplish and what we're trying to fund, and how we're going to fund those things in 2022. We haven't really started the conversation of 2023, which we'll get to just a bit during this conversation. How do I? Oh, okay.
Matt, can you make your little, the little blocks in the right smaller so we can...
Yeah, I'm trying. Everything's all blown up. How do I? Is this one?
I'll do it.
Oh, thank you.
That one.
So objectives for today. We're going to talk about, a little bit about the 2022 fiscal challenges that we talked about last time, as well as the 2022 fiscal opportunities. Discuss the... Discuss the fiscal opportunities and the balances and the restrictions that are within those. We obviously identified a handful of funds, but there are restrictions around them. Discuss the 2023 impacts. That's going to be kind of in combination with what the administration has provided, as well as some of my own projections. We're going to do, if we have time, a little exercise, looking at the 2022 funding possibilities and kind of moving those buckets around to see what we're left with when we do that. We're going to determine, after that kind of exercise, we're going to look at things to say, okay, what are the minimum fund balances that we're comfortable with going into 2020, 2023? And then, obviously, talking about the trickle-down effects as it relates to 2023, and so on. Just a quick reminder, we have three levels of funding fiscal challenges that we're, that we're discussing. Level one have already been approved by the, the city council. Those are primarily going to be the collective bargaining agreements that are approved, 270, 29, and the Police Guild. Some pretty monumental moves, but they obviously present theirs, they present some opportunities and some challenges there. Level two, approximately 6.4 to 7 point, 6.4 to 7.4 million. That number has gone down since, since our last discussion. What, what happened there is I removed the 2.5 million in the Trent Shelter operations. In discussions with some of the administration staff, it sounds like what they're doing is they're pulling that, in the immediate, they're pulling the Trent Shelter operations and costs from that $3.8 million that was allocated in the 2022 budget. I'm not sure if, if everybody remembers that, but they originally were planning on pulling it from, I believe it was $14.06. Council had passed an amendment to say, okay, we're going to pull that from criminal justice funds. We've allocated 3 point million, 3.8 million. I, I believe with those funds and all of the ants, or those expenses, as well as all of the ancillary expenses that are going to be going through that, that 3.8 million dollars, and, and again, this is just based on the conversations that I've had, are going to be burned through by the end of the year. That's, that's including, you know, snow removal, that's including the wraparound services, that's including the, the lease costs, the operators' costs. All of that is going to be utilized within the next four months. If, if that is the case, it's my understanding that they'll then start going into the 3.5 million that's been allocated for the ARPA funds, and, and move into utilizing those funds. So you can, you can probably, you would be correct to probably assume that there will be, when you're joining those funds together, the 3.8 and the 3.5, there will be remaining fund balance moving into the 2023 year, but in no way will it cover the 2023 costs from what we're seeing. Yeah.
And Matt, so if, if we burn through what's there now in, in the next four months, we are going to have, because with the operating agreement and, and likely the, the service contract will be done soon, we're contractually obligated to allocate dollars towards that in the budget, right?
That's correct, yeah.
So, so I guess the conversation then is, do we sort of subtract the ARPA amount from, from that, or, or kind of like, how does ARPA play in with that, those 2023 budget discussions?
Yeah, we're, well, we're really going to have to see where we're, where we land at the end of 2022, before we even start that conversations. I mean, just, just as we know, just from the operator agreement, we're looking at a six, six-plus million dollar cost, right? So the 3.5 doesn't even get us there in, in any way, shape, or form for the remainder of the services, as well as the lease, and, and everything that's going to be included in that cost. And, and that's going to be part of the 2023 conversation that I, I believe administration is going to be presenting to council when we kind of pass the baton after these conversations with them. So level three, again, that's that $31.8 million of organizational requests that we've seen through ARPA requests from the mayor. In no way is it, is it all-inclusive. I believe there's some other that are out there, but we know that, that's what we know of at the moment. We're, we're most likely, I mean, based on, on the resource requests that are coming into the administration's budget office at this moment, that we're most likely going to be seeing more requests that are coming through other than that $31.8 million. Category one, this is, again, talking about the fiscal opportunities that we discussed last time. General Fund and ARPA are going to be the, the, the most unrestricted balances, the unallocated, the unallocated reserves, as well as the ARPA funds that are unallocated at this moment in time. Currently, the way that the revenue replacement calculation is set out, we can absorb all of that 13.5 million into the revenue replacement category of ARPA. And just as a reminder for everybody, that 13.5 million, if we do put it in revenue replacement, it, it is very, it, it doesn't have very many restrictions on it. You can really use it for any governmental services that, that you have historically done in the past. Category two, again, those are restricted. We've got, you know, 1910, which is criminal justice, which we're, we're already utilizing some of those funds, we just talked about that, the 3.8 million. 1610, which is the REIT II taxes, you can use that for homelessness and housing initiatives within a certain period of, window of time. Restriction being that you can only use up to $1 million in that, and it does have to be within your capital facilities plan. 1725, which is House Bill 1406, and likewise, House Bill 1590, are affordable housing sales tax credits and housing and mental health services. And then 0020 is compensation reserves. Then we have category three, internal loans. I, I, I don't want to necessarily talk on that quite yet, because what we're, what we're talking about with internal loans, and I believe it was Councilmember Cathcart that identified it last time, is that we really have to identify what, what we're going to be spending on that is one-time and not ongoing costs when we're, when we're talking about internal loans. And really, all of these expenses that we're talking about at this moment that are in categories one and two are ongoing costs. While there is a current cost, there is a future anticipated cost.
Yeah, so if that's the case, why are we talking about ARPA in that context? Because ARPA is a one-time funding source, so why would we include that to potentially cover ongoing expenses?
So the, so the, the ARPA is, the, the reason that we're talking about that is really, we have no other place to pull it from. The only, the only other place that we can pull it from, to get ourselves current through the end of 2022, is, is drastically reducing services within the remaining four months of, that we have in 2022.
But there's no indication things are going to improve, so if we can't fund things this year, we're going to really not be able to fund them next year.
You're absolutely right.
We are setting ourselves up for a disaster.
Absolutely right. So, and, and we're going to get to that. We're going to get to just how much of a cliff that, that shows when we're, when we're going on this strategy. Unfortunately, but truly, we're, we're looking at this right now in quarter four. I mean, today is first day of quarter four of our, of our annual year. So we can't really make strategic shifts in quarter four. These, these are, these are shifts that we should have made in quarter one and two, but we're up against a wall right now where we need to have this funding in some way, shape, or form, and, and really, you know, the only alternative is, is just drastically reducing services to, to an extreme amount to save that type of money within, within one quarter of, of an annual budget.
But is that not the conversation we need to be having? Because if we don't have it now, imagine how much worse it's only going to get.
And, and that is, I, I hope that is the conversation that we're having. I hope that, that's, you know, the, the conversation that we're having is illustrating the gravity of this conversation, and it's not just saying, okay, we're talking about this, this is one-time, we'll solve the Band-Aid. Even if we drastically do put a Band-Aid on there, and we cover everything with one-time costs, from my projections, you're still going to hit that structural gap that we're hitting. I mean, when we're looking at a, an annual budget that is $216 million, as illustrated by the 2022 budget, and we have $167 million of that being payroll costs, you know, you're, you're only looking at, at about a $50 million delta right there, that's, that's the difference. You can't, you can't cut an extreme amount within that delta. We, we have to, we, we have to know that as we're increasing our cost of compensation, at the very least 5% based on the, based on the bargaining agreements that we've agreed to so far, that they're going to match up against, against the revenues that we're hitting. And like you said earlier, you know, we are either up against a recession, or we're currently in one. And so while we can't guarantee our 3% growth rate when we're in those recession years.
Well, I, I think the other thing that we need to talk about too, and I've brought this up a few times, but it's just the idea of, you know, let's look at what's statutorily required that we have to do. Obviously, I mean, my belief is the priority is certainly public safety, so I think that's the last place you go, even though it is the biggest part of our budget. I think it's the last place you touch. And so I think, you know, we should start looking at what are, you know, not necessarily removing services so much as where can we potentially contract out, do something in a different way to, just to save money?
Right.
And maybe that's enough to get us through this year, but, you know, I, we, we're going to have to have those, those serious conversations, and, you know, what are some things that we just don't absolutely have to do, we're not required to do it, and that we can save some money to keep our, our budget balanced? And I just, I'm, I'm very fearful that, having not had those conversations yet, we're getting to the point where it's going to be too late to do any of that for '22, and, and, I mean, we're going to have to for '23, but, but I'm just worried that time is slipping by pretty darn fast.
It is. You're right.
So what's the percentage of public safety and general fund?
Currently, there's approximately 16, or 68 million that's, that's going to police, and 45 million that's going to fire from the general fund. So that's roughly 113 million of the $216 million budget.
Okay.
So more than half.
Okay. So we've been talking about a structural gap in the city for as long as I can remember. I've been here since 2008, and it, it never seems to be fixed. It seems to be this constant specter that looms over us, that there's going to be a structural gap, depending on the year, depending on what kind of sales tax revenue that we can attract. So I guess my question is, do you see any way that we could just fix this for one, once and for all, so we're not every single year talking about we are, we are facing a structural gap?
Well, first and foremost, I would say, you know, I mean, yes, yes, it's, there's, there's, you know, I mean, you can make the, you can make the argument that, that it's doable. It is very, very difficult. The biggest challenge that we're having right now is when we're looking at ongoing costs and we're, you, we're utilizing all of our one-time money, there's no way we're going to get ahead. I mean, that is, that is you putting your savings account in your general expenses for your household, your household budget. There, there's, there's no way that you'll ever get ahead, hoping that you're going to get the big raise that, that's coming down the road. In city government, it's, it's just not going to happen. I mean, the biggest spike that we had, from my personal opinion, well, I mean, not from my own personal opinion, but from the numbers themselves, is really what we hit in this, this last 16 months. That was that, that giant spike that we saw with sales tax. We can't assume that that's going to happen again, because it's, it's not. It's not, especially the way that the numbers are trending already. So yes, it's, it's doable, but it is, it is a strategic shift. It is not just saying, okay, yeah, we're going to cut costs here, you know, we're going to, we're going to buy less supplies over here, maybe we're going to do less capital improvement over here, maybe we're going to do less improvements. It's all of those things together. It's all of those things together, and, and unfortunately, but truly, it's looking at staffing. I mean, when, when we're looking at staffing and we're looking at a compounded cost of compensation that's, that's compounding at 5%, we're up against a wall with, with what we can do within that, within that number, when it's such a significant amount of the city, the city's expenses.
And so are you taking into, are you taking into consideration that we have, what, about 280 vacancies right now? So if we did not, if we chose not to fill those vacancies, would that correct some of that, or not?
It would, it, it, it helps. I mean, it, it sounds like what you're talking about is a hiring freeze of sorts. It definitely helps. In another state agency that I previously worked for, you know, it, it lessens, it lessens the, the curve a little bit, but it doesn't help completely. I mean, of the 280 vacancies that are there, I think actually the, the number that I saw the other day was 258. I think only about 70 of those were actually within the general fund. So while, while, yes, I mean, 250 sounds like a big number, it's, it's not as significant of a number when you dive a little bit deeper into it. If you were to take, you know, those 70, if you were to take those 70 vacancies that are there, and you were to say, okay, multiply each one of them just on an average of $100,000, okay, you're looking at a $7 million, which, which doesn't get us 100% of the way there. And just like what we did last year during our 2022 budget exercises, and we saw those vacancy reports, we talked about, we, you know, we, we started pulling vacancies that were more than two years old, and we said, okay, let's, let's get rid of all of these vacant positions, because obviously they're not necessary. And then that's when the conversation started happening with those departments of absolutely not, we need this, the only reason that it's been vacant for two years is because of civil service, or the pandemic, or whatever it may be. So even if we were to say that the, the 70 number is there, I, I would say realistically, you can't, on current service levels, obviously, you cannot shave those 70 numbers, or those 70 employees and think that that's going to be a realistic option for you. Just as I was saying, you know, with previous state agency that I was with, you know, when, when a recession hit, they, they said, hey, you know, all of our employees are, are going to take a 5% cost of compensation decrease so that nobody gets terminated. We're not doing that. We're going the other direction. So, so it's, it poses significant challenges. Yes.
So my conversation has been, when the budget came out last year, that budget was built on the back of ARPA dollars, and we kept telling the administration, do not include those dollars to balance the 2022 budget. That did not happen, and we did not ever see any savings that was brought forward to us to help balance the budget, because I kept asking, if there were no ARPA dollars, what would you do?
Right.
And nobody ever answered that question from the administration's side. Even to today, that 31 million gap that they want funded, which doesn't add up to the math from 13 to 31, it is not there going forward. So we have to look at that, and we do know our personnel is the most important thing. They make the city run, but as my fellow councilmember said, some hard decisions have to come from the administration's side, and we have yet to see some hard decisions come from the administration's side.
It, I mean, it is challenging when you're, when you are faced with a proposed budget or the budget, and, and it is an increased in overall, it, it is an increase in overall positions year over year on a regular basis, when, when we're going through a pandemic at that point in time. I, I understand, I understand the, the incentive to not reduce services by any means, but it's, it's, it puts us in a difficult situation when we're, when we're combining collective bargaining agreements that we know are going to be an increased cost of compensation on top of additional employees as well. So it, it makes it difficult, and we do burn through those one-time funds really quickly. Yes?
You, you mentioned at the state level, one of the things they did was the reduction in, in compensation. Would we have to go back into bargaining to make a similar decision if there was a dire need to do some drastic measure like that?
It has to be in agreement with the union themselves. In, in that case, I mean, obviously, there was unions involved as well. It, it is an MOU stating, stating exactly that, and it's an agreement on both sides. But quite frankly, I mean, when you're looking at that and you're saying, okay, and I, I don't like to say the, the word layoffs, but when you're looking at either the possibility of layoffs as a union versus a, a lower compensation, you know, as a union protecting the employees, they're, they're going to look at lower compensation because they don't want, hopefully, because they don't want to lose employees. And, and that might be where we go. I don't, I don't know. But they're, they're all difficult conversations, no matter what. So moving forward, I think we talked about the different fiscal opportunities. Want to talk a little bit, there was a quick mention of, of what we're talking about for public safety. I, I think Councilmember Kinnear had said, you know, what, what is public safety of this overall budget? While it is 113 million, I mean, there are significant departments that are also funded through the general fund, approximately 10 million's going to the library, 45 million going to parks, or fire, I'm sorry, 17 million in current year going to parks, 10 million going to street arterial, 1.1 to parking, 6 million to asset management. That's part of that 91 million, yes.
Sorry, I keep asking questions.
It's all right.
You, you mentioned parks, and, and so statutorily, we have to give them, I think it's 8% in arrears.
Yep.
Is that where we're at, or are we above that number?
Is, is that?
When you said 17, the 17 million.
Did we surpass that? No, that's where we're at. We're, we're not above that number. That's, that's the 8%.
So we have to allocate that much?
Yeah, that actually stemmed the increase there, the 16.8 million, or roughly 16... That actually stemmed the increase there, the sixteen point eight million or roughly seventeen million that we're at there. And I, I know the CFO, Tanya Wallace, had, had briefed this, I believe during the 2022 budget discussions. But that's because of the, the bond, the bond refinancing that we did. Unfortunately, just, just because it happened, it, it was actually refinanced through the general fund. So the expense went through the general fund, even though it was a net impact zero. The, the fund, the financing or the expenses still went, the purchase of them still went out of the general fund where there is a, a specific bond fund that that could have taken place. And it, it just impacted that and increased that parks, that parks allocation. So it's gonna be a blip that should smooth out. But it, it did happen in that current year just because of the bond refinancing. Alright. So category one fiscal opportunities, we talked about these briefly. We've got about fifteen point eight million dollars that was relayed to us in the, the seven twenty-two un-audited financial statements from Tanya Wallace and, and the finance department. While that fifteen point eight million dollars was, was the estimation at the time, we also have taken the three point one-three million out of the, the general fund unallocated reserves for the police SBO. There's also the, the, the election two hundred and fifty, a quarter million dollars of, of election expenses that could theoretically come from there. So roughly, let's just say, from un-unallocated reserves, we're sitting on twelve point five million dollars in spendable savings. Again, no restrictions on spending limit other than any sort of self-imposed restriction that, that the, the council or administration would put on there. American Rescue Plan, the ARPA funds, approximately thirteen point eight million is unallocated at this point in time. You know, there is, there is the opportu- opportunities for sweepbacks for overfunded allocations or failed searches or a change in initiatives that the council does see. But right now, there is thirteen point eight million unallocated of which, again, can go into that revenue replacement category that has very little restriction. Yes.
Yeah, you referred to the twelve point five as spendable. Is it, I mean, is it in reality spendable? Is there, other than just putting ourselves in a difficult position by spending that down to nothing? Is there, does it affect our bond rating? Is there anything else on the backend that, that could happen from drawing that down?
Not, no. To, to my knowledge, no, on the bond rating. It is, it is fully spendable. I know Gavin Cooley, former CFO, is, is investing like crazy. But cash, cash balance should be there for us to spend it if need be.
So unallocated reserves is at twelve point five million. What was it at the beginning of the year or what? Was it over?
I, so I would say that that fifteen point eight million that, that, a- at the beginning of 2022 is, is where the finance department and the CFO has, has illustrated it to be. I, I, I'm right alongside where, where that is, pulling out unrealized gains and losses.
So I just say, I remember when Councilmember Mum was here, that fund was almost at twenty million dollars. So it has gone down significantly. And you skipped over on your previous slide utilities. I don't think you've funded opportunities.
Sorry, I apologize. So that, I mean, there is, there is the opportunity for the utility tax. We talked briefly about it. It is, in no way is it gonna be a 2022 revenue that we're gonna be able to claim. It, it, it's an uphill battle, no matter what it is. And there's a lot of negotiations, discussions that might have. As, as everybody probably remembers, this is, this is the utility tax that we're talking about for the wastewater treatment plant that is, that is owned by the county but within city limits. I believe it was built in 2011 and we have not been collecting that tax on it since, since inception. There's, there's discussions on, on, you know, what to do next with that. But it, but I can't see it as a 2022, 2022 resource. Yes.
And then there's the one-tenth money, which is about six million dollars too, is that?
Emergency communications.
The emergency communications, yes, that I believe that Johnny Perkins is in negotiations with, with the county right now of collecting that. I, I believe, yes, you're correct, that the six, the six million is, is the, the number that I've, I've seen as well. Any other questions on this one here? Movement of category two fiscal opportunities, general fund contingency reserve. Now, this is approximately twenty-one point six million based on the general fund adopted budget of two hundred and sixteen million dollars. Ten percent of the general fund expenditure budget is, is what is allocated for the contingency reserve based on the SMCO seven oh eight oh one zero C three. But as you can see on C four, the disbursements from the contingency reserve account are for the purpose of meeting extraordinary expenditures as deemed by the city council in consultation with the chief financial officer designated to meet the following criteria: unforeseen circumstances, unforeseen emergencies, unanticipated non-continuing expenses, and significant operating efficiencies that can be achieved and resulting in a clearly identified near-term offsetting cost savings. If we decide to go down that road, it's, it's gonna be difficult to justify that, in my opinion. You know, as, as we're looking at collective bargaining agreements, I think that we knew those, those bargaining agreements had been expired. We knew that they were gonna be on the horizon. We knew that historically, they've, the cost has always gone up. Whether it been to that degree or not, you could probably make that argument. Emergency threatening health and/or safety. You could talk about that a little bit as it relates to the homelessness response that we're, we're dealing with. But that's not in either one of the level one or level two responses. You could talk about it a little bit when you're talking about fire or police overtime and the need that's been there based on the, the vacancies as well as the, the overtime that's been needed to conduct regular activities with the department. But again, unanticipated non-continuing expenses are needed to fulfill, that, that's, yes.
So, so how much is in there right now? Is it twenty-one point six?
Twenty-one point six, yes.
And so it's supposed to be ten percent of the current budget. So if next year's budget was two fifteen,
Yes.
as an example, it would only, it would go down by that amount?
Right.
Okay, and then if it, if we do spend that down, does this have an impact on our bond rating?
Ah, I, actually, I believe so on that one. I, I'd have to get more information. I, I don't have it off the cuff on that. But I, I can get more information on, on what exactly the, the bond rating is based on. I, I know it's, we've gone up several notches in, in, in the past several, several years. And I, I know it was to the efforts of former CFO as well as Councilmember Mum on establishing these reserves. So let me get a little bit more information before I give you a definitive answer on that.
And the only expense I can really, in my brain, think that would apply and it might have actually been last year now that I think about it, but would be the, the emergency couple million we had to spend on the, the landslide in Peaceful Valley. That, that I could see would make sense have coming from this, but that's probably the only expense that I could justify.
It's, I mean, there, there is some wiggle room within the definition. It, it is, I mean, when, when you're, when you're up against a wall, I mean, you, you don't wanna say like, okay, here, here is more of a reason for me to go into my savings or my 401K or whatever it may be. But, but I, I'm just putting it out there to say that there are options. It is a possibility. It's, it's, it's not a clear-cut possibility that, and it's not necessarily advisable that we pull from this. Next is gonna be the criminal justice fund. This, you know, if you go down to the bottom bullet point there, we had ten point seven million at the beginning of the year, six point eight-five million budgeted for revenue for the current year, twelve point six million for budgeted expense. Now, you might ask, okay, why are we budgeting way more than our budget revenue than expense? Remember, we pulled the three point eight-five million as well as the one million. Put three point eight five for emergency sheltering and homelessness costs as well as the one million for the VOA crosswalk costs. And so that four point, roughly five million dollars is, is the, is the reason for the high increase in costs, knowing that we are going to be dipping into our fund balance. Because as you can see above, in the, in the bullet point above, we, that, that fund balance has grown year over year, about five million dollars over the past four years. So we, you know, in 2019, we were looking, or 2018, we were looking, tail end of 2018, we were looking at a, a five and a half million. We started at, at, at ten-seven this year. Again, we have a little bit more wiggle room within May thirteenth, 2021 and December thirteenth, 2023, when we're talking about trench shelter operations. Because we, the, the, the RCW allows for that, that, those, those expenses to be run through there. But remember, with that three point eight million, now, now we're sitting back down to that fund balance of approximately five million dollars if everything goes accordingly to plan as, of this year. We don't wanna be dipping really into too much of that when we're looking at a, a jail negotia- or a jail contract that, that is in negotiation right now. So just having that within your, having that within your, on your horizon is, is important. Now, there is a little bit of discussion and I'm trying to do some more research on to see if we can pull, because these are criminal justice funds, to pull some of the police overtime costs into criminal justice funds. I, I've gotta do a little bit more research on it, but I, but I believe that it's allowable. Again, don't quote me on it for sure. I'm gonna do, I'm gonna talk to City Legal to see if, if they, if they are in, if they're, if they're on the same wavelength as me as well as finance. Yes.
So once again, I, if, if the overtime is systemic, it's not one-time. So, so if we're gonna draw this balance down, I mean, will, will this grow again by next year? That we could pull from this again to cover that overtime? I mean, is that sustainable?
Uh, not a hundred percent. I, I, I wouldn't say a hundred percent. I would say roughly, it's been growing about a million a year, a million five, anywhere between one and two million dollars a year.
The balance, but we get six or seven million.
Yes, 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 yes. The balance of it, but primarily what it goes to is, is the jail costs. Now, do I think we could make up the four million dollars of police overtime that we're probably gonna be facing in the next year? Probably not. Could we recoup it in, you know, several years down the road? Maybe, depending on what else we're pulling out of that account. I mean, if we're, if we're talking about funding any bit of homelessness for next year as well, which I believe I've seen on some of the administration's projections, is pulling another four and a half million dollars from this criminal justice fund, that fund is one hundred percent depleted. I mean, frighteningly enough that maybe it goes into a deficit. So again, you've gotta look at the whole picture when, when you're deciding on that.
Yeah. Was the trench shelter taken out of the criminal justice fund and is that accounted for here?
So the trench shelter, yes. So, so that's, when I started the conversation, that three point eight-five million, that is what, that is what, from my understanding, based on, on talking to a handful of finance people within the city, that they're pulling from that and based on the, 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 the presentation that John and Tanya gave and Johnny Perkins gave over the past few weeks, it's, it's been, it's been looking to pull from that first and then ARPA allocation being the remainder if-
For the services?
For the services, for all costs, for all costs.
So this number right now is not deducting trench shelter?
This is. So the twelve point six million is, is, is included in that three point five, or that three point eight-five that we've allocated. Yeah. Real estate excise tax, again, this is, this is that one that we talked about a little bit. This is a little bit of, of wiggle room here for what we can do. Ten point one million in the one-twenty-two balance, six million in budgeted revenue, one point five million in budgeted expense for a fund balance of fourteen point six million. We have the ability to use this for homelessness and housing initiatives, but it does need to be within the capital plan, the capital improvement plan, which I know that they're finalizing now for future years. Yes.
Can we, we can only use half of it though, right?
We can only use a million for hous- housing and homelessness. So it's, it's-
Is it a million each year or can, if we haven't used it for a million last year, can we add an extra million this year? Can we do two million this year or three million next year?
I, I don't, I, I don't think you can, you can compound it from, from prior years that you haven't used it, especially when it's not in your capital facilities plan.
I know, assuming it got in the, oh, you're saying if it wasn't in the capital facilities plan?
Right. I don't think we can, we can use the 2019 or twenty or twenty-one allocations and say, okay, we're gonna spend five million this year.
Could you look into that more?
Yeah.
Cause that's a pretty big deal.
Yep, yep. Let me just. Alright.
So Matt, if, if we can only, if there's fourteen million in there and you're only allowed to use a million, what, what's the remainder allowable?
So it's for streets, sidewalks, parks, your, your general capital, your capital improvements by the city.
And they use it for match. So when they go after grants, they can use that for match.
Okay, so, so we have spent that down for, for those types of projects?
It, it, it's kinda cyclical in, in the way that it's spent from, from the way that I'm seeing it.
So is that the primary purpose that we use these funds then for, for matching for grants?
In the, in the past, we have, but the legislature updated and said, no, you can use it for this too. But in the past, it's been a, a main revenue source for grant matching, yeah. For, for street improvements.
Okay, moving into fourteen oh six dollars. Again, this, this one originally was for 2022 was allocated. There was, there was a million dollars that was initially proposed to be allocated out of there for housing and homelessness by the administration. We ended up pulling that out. That was for the VOA crosswalk. We pulled that out. We charged it to the criminal justice fund because it didn't fall in line with what the council had believed that those, these funds were for. So currently, right now, we have, at the beginning of the year, we had seven, approximately seven hundred thousand, four hundred thousand estimated in revenue for 2022, sixty-five K in budgeted expenses. Plus that five hundred thousand is, is really, is there because, if you remember, we took the ten million dollar grant for affordable housing that we combined six million dollars in ARPA funds and then obviously four million dollars in combined of fourteen oh six and fifteen ninety dollars. That, I haven't been able to find where that is allocated within FMS. But, but I know that four million dollars is pulling from fourteen oh six. So I just said roughly five hundred thousand just, just to get us there, to say, okay, they're, they're contributing some. That might change. But given that considered, it's gonna be at about five hundred and sixty thousand dollars for an estimated fund balance at the end of the year. Again, acquisition rehab, construction of affordable housing. When I'm, when I'm presenting the fourteen oh six and the fifteen ninety dollars, you might wonder like, okay, well, why does that matter for payroll expenses that we obviously can't put in this? We can, we can retool things around and we can move things around a little bit to where, you know, it might be a possibility that we, we have more general fund allocation there. So I'm just saying that there's wiggle room for us to pull some of our expenses into these fourteen oh six, these fifteen ninety dollars, especially as we're looking at 2022 and 2023. Fifteen ninety, same thing. Two point four million was allocat- or was in there. This, this started in 2021 from my recollection. Two point four million was in the, the fund balance as of one-twenty-two, five point eight million budgeted for revenue. And then zero dollars budgeted expense. But again, that plus four million is that, that ten million dollar award that I'm, I'm talking about that maybe it's, that I know it's coming from there. I just can't find it, seem to find it in FMS. So we're, we're looking at about a four point two estimated fund balance for year end. And then we have the payroll reserve accounts. This is the, so the nine hundred and forty-eight thousand is what administration had put, set aside in the reserve for budget adjustments that has happened within, that occurs in most of the different departments. City council has one, but this is, this was allocated from my discussion with, actually, just, just yesterday from an email response from Tanya Wallace, that this was pulled for the cost of, of compensation, the increased cost of compensation based on the labor contract. This is just for police, or this is, I'm sorry, this is just for fire. It's in a combination of two different funds, obviously, the, the fire EMS fund being one of them and then the public safety levy being another one of them. One point five million dollars in allocated savings made via the amendment to the 2022 budget allocation for anticipated increase in compensation based on expired, expired or expiring collective bargaining agreements. That was the one that, again, that you, you had voted on to amend the budget from the, the, the administration's proposed budget. Problem being is that it only covers about less than twenty percent of the overall funding need based on the current need in 2022. So we're looking at, you know, two point five million, but we're, we're still seeing a huge delta that's out there. I'm gonna just jump us back really quick. And I know I'm running a little short on time, so I apologize.
We're, we're fine on time.
Okay.
What are you trying to do?
I'm gonna try to stop sharing on PowerPoint.
Oh, you gotta stop sharing the whole thing there.
Works. And then start sharing on Excel. What would I do without you, Hannah Lee? Okay, so this is- So this is just kind of talking about all of those things in a consolidated webpage or in a consolidated workbook. Right now, we're looking at, um, and this is, this is that exercise that I wanted to talk to you about. Oh, sorry. I'll try to get closer. Here, let's do this. Uh, we've got level one, level two. Um, again, we pulled the homelessness operations, the 2.5 million in homelessness operations. We do not have a number for M&amp;P negotiations and let's just take level three off of the discussion table for right now because this is going to be the most immediate. Right now, we've got 19.65 million in, in unfunded, uh, balances. If we were to just kind of, um, say, okay, this is what we have available and we were to pull, um, these two balances and this is kind of that exercise of saying, okay, let's pull, oops, let's pull this one and, uh, to the payroll reserve. that one to payroll reserve. Now we're looking at, uh, a $17 million deficit that we're still finding. Now, the, the point of this exercise is really to say, okay, of this, we know we have the 12.5 million dollars in unallocated reserves. We know we have the 13.86 in ARPA funds. We know we have, and collectively that's roughly $25 million. We still know that we have 17 million dollars of, of things, 17 plus million dollars of things that we are going to need to fund for this current year. That is the 270s, the 29s, the police guild and the PDA retros. If, if you start pulling these things down, right, if you start pulling these into unallocated reserves or what have you, I mean, say if we wanted to just put the police and the fire overtime into unallocated reserves and we're down to here. We're now down to 5.1 million dollars in unallocated reserves. Now theoretically, could we pull that 9.8 and put it into ARPA? Is that something that council wants to do? That is, that is something that we want to, we need to have that discussion. I don't know if we want to have that today or if we want to see the trickle down effect as we're looking at about 15 minutes left of, of the meeting today. But let's just theoretically say that we've, we have pulled, oops, all of that and put it into ARPA. Now there's only $4 million left in ARPA. And you have burned through every ounce of your savings. You've burned through, well, you've burned through nearly every ounce of, of your unallocated reserve savings, which is-
And is that the, the back pay that you're putting in there essentially?
That's the back pay, yes. That's the back pay and the current pay. So-
Wait, current, current pay? So for 2022?
That is current, yep. Turn, current for 2022 as well as back for previously expired bargaining.
So I get the back pay, but if, but current pay, again, sustainability, if we're using 110 funds for current pay, how do we pay the current pay next year?
Right.
And, and on that, that's the expected overtime for this year as well, correct?
That is the expected overtime for this year. So there, there's, we've seen, council has seen the 3.4 million dollar, uh, budget, uh, SBO that has, that has come through for just fire. Um, we haven't seen anything for police yet. Where I'm seeing it tracking is at about $4 million. And again, those, those are, those are 100, over 100% over their budgets of, of where they're at. I mean, I, I think fire was at 2, 3 that they had budgeted for. We're allocating another 3, 4 for them. So, I mean, we're, we're looking at twice, yeah.
So what I, what I remember from, from Tanya's presentation was it was 9.7 million dollars that we're going to have in fire overtime this year. 3.1 was something that we'd allocated. So we had to come up with another 6.6. Uh, we'd, we'd allocated 3.4 from somewhere and then, you know, they needed another 3 million, um, on that to be done. And so, um, through this, um, to address Councilman Cathcart's question, um, if we were able to through this study on the overtime that is, that is really out of control in these, in these areas, uh, how much relief does that get us in future sustainability questions?
Well, again, it, it, it's difficult because you've got bargaining agreements that, that stayed out explicitly, levels of service. Um, you've now reduced, you've now removed debit days from the fire department, which invariably is going to need an increase in, uh, an increase in staffing to cover those days that were debit days previously. So, you know, there, there's going to be some absorption of it. Um, but if you're going to be taking any of the things that are under consideration that the, the overtime su- study presents, uh, it's, it's going to have to be done through bargaining, whether it be an MOU within their current bargaining contract or the next, the next bargaining cycle that you're looking at. I mean, police, thankfully you have, you have just a one year contract, so you can, you can kind of throw that into it and, and have that be a discussion point. But fire and, um, other, you know, other, uh, unions, you're, you're not going to have that benefit. Yes.
So with the city joining SREC, is that going to, is that savings figured in somewhere?
So that savings is not figured in somewhere because it's, it's, it's not a foregone conclusion from my understanding. Um, and really, um, from my perspective, while, while the savings, there, there is savings for fire department going to SREC. In, in, from my perspective, the entirety of the public safety needs to go to SREC, not just fire. And so while we've got a two, we've got many, um, we've got many of the, uh, police dispatchers that are working in, in 270 and we've just finished up that contract. So again, that's going to be have, that's, that would be something that you would have to reopen the conversations and do some sort of MOU. It would have been great to have those conversations in tandem, but unfortunately we didn't.
And the police are not, the last conversation we had with them, that was not something they were willing to do?
Yeah. Which is, I mean, I, I can't, I can't necessarily speak to that, but I, I, I mean, there may be savings by going, by just having fire go to, um, SREC, but it's, it's, it's not going to have the same gravity of if all of dispatch went to SREC and was a regional response that we were paying out to. Um, let me just present one more thing here. So, whoops. Just going back to this, this is the projections that we, oops, that we saw from, uh, Tanya Wallace had provided us this, uh, from administration's point of view. This is based on a lot of, uh, pretty significant scenarios and, and it still shows, this is using 100% of the, 100% of the, um, the unallocated reserves. This is also assuming that there is still a one, a 2.8 million dollar funding, uh, unfunded amount, 600,000 in warming and cooling that needs to be funded still. I believe, and again, I know Tanya can talk, to speak to this, but I believe that this is going to be, um, less because I think what they're including in that is the remaining, uh, warming shelters that we needed in the beginning of 2022. Uh, fire overtime, this number we know is down to 3.4, PDA retro, election studies, et cetera. So some of these numbers are going to change and I've, I've reflected it in my, my worksheet that's similar to this, but you're still looking at only, only about a 1.5 million dollar surplus. That's considering the, uh, a, a 5% rate of growth on, um, sales tax revenue compared to budget. I don't see us being there. I see us being probably closer to 4%. So that's going to shave away about a million dollars from that. So all things considered, you're looking at, you know, I, I would say a, a net surplus deficit of zero. You can, you can be, I mean, to be conservative, I would say that. But that just doesn't show the trickle down effect of what happens in future years. Again, we've, this, this number here has changed and I'll show you that in mine. Um, but even to, uh, to, to administration's own projections, they're, they're showing a significant eight, eight-figure deficit in 2023 and 2024, 25 and 26, uh, I don't believe is, is fully accurate because what, what this doesn't include is the ongoing shelter operations of which we're looking at approximately, I mean, I, I think a conservative estimate, um, is $7 million on that. Um, we're not looking at, uh, police and fire equipment for future years other than 2023 to be touched. So we could say a conservative estimate is probably $3 million for each one of those. So there's a lot of things that I, I don't think are completely identified in this, but it's, it's, it's a great tool and I really appreciate the fact that Tanya shared it out. Um, and let me just kind of go back to this and... oh boy. And I know this is a ton of information, so if you want me to dive deeper in on any of these things, uh, moving forward, please, please let me know. But this is, this is kind of piggybacking off of, uh, what Tanya had provided to us. Um, you know, moving this down to a 1.5 million dollar, uh, available from budget forecast is probably more realistic. Um, and that's just the surplus of what we would have in the current year. The 12.5 obviously gives us closer to the unappropriated fund balance that we're looking at. Compensation and, um, compensation reserves of local 29 and the general compensation are both identified for. This, um, M&amp;P number, um, I, I don't want to put a number in there because I know it's still negotiating, but when you're looking at 2 and a half percent, it's at, uh, 215,000 based on the discussions that you can have. Um, just, just think, just put that into the back of your head on, on what that is. Again, this still identifies the 1.3 and the 1.5 for police and fire equipment that was unfunded in current year. It reduces the fire overtime amount to 3.4, but also includes the police overtime of 4, 4 million dollars. Look, puts us to a deficit of 7.6 million dollars. Where does that money come from is, is up to this council at the end of the day. I mean, obviously we're going to get suggestions from, uh, administration, but when you're looking at a, when you're wanting to look at this budget and you're going to want to look at the, the, the problems that we have for just getting us through the end of the year, that is a number that we're, that is staring us in the face and that's a conservative estimate. Um, so we're going to need to have pretty aggressive conversations on how we fix that. Again, to, uh, Councilmember Cathcart's, uh, point, you know, there's little that we can do now that we're sitting in quarter four. When we're looking at, uh, you know, when we're looking at 113 million of that, of that 216 million dollar B, public safety, uh, and 25, well, 25 to 30 departments getting the remaining crumbs that are left, splitting that within a quarter, within four month, or three months of their budget is going to be very, very difficult to swallow. $8 million of that, that's, that's nearly 10% of what they have for their annual budget, let alone if you were to just look at it for a quarter. Then what we're looking at is we're looking at 2023 as we're looking at, you know, that $7 million, uh, $7 million cost of the trench shelter as we're signing contracts that are, that are impacting future funding. We're looking at now not just a $10 million shortfall, we're looking at a 20, nearly $25 million shortfall on a conservative end. And, and that doesn't include the, uh, the, uh, M&amp;P negotiations that, that are invariably going to impact us in future years. So there's a lot of things to consider. Um, I, I don't know, I guess at this point in time, I kind of want to know where the council would like me to go. Um, you know, what we could do is we could do a handful of things. We could, we could kind of, uh, pass this off to administration and say, okay, this is, this is what we're seeing. If you're seeing something different, please present it to us. If, if you want to pass it to administration and say, this is what we're seeing, we need a solution, we can do that and start talking about suggestions, but we need it quick because we need, we're, we're looking at really only two more months of, um, I'm sorry, three more months of, uh, of council meetings that are going to be happening. And that's November, or September, October, November. We have one in the beginning or two maybe in the beginning of December. So we've got to, we've got to clear these things up in those handful of meetings that are left.
And the mayor presents her budget in October? When is that date?
Mayor presents her budget in October. We're, we're due to get, um, projected revenues and expenditures in, uh, sometime this month, I believe late this month. I just talked to Jessica about it. Um, we're working on those revenue projections as it is right now. Um, I know they're working, you know, all hours of the day to try to get all of those, those budget requests that have been in so far into the new system of Questica and trying to, um, deal with all the resource requests that are coming through. Um, but I, I, I anticipate it's going to be a scramble yet again.
So we're continuing to get requests from department heads, SBOs and so forth. And I think we need to telegraph to the rest of the city that we don't got no money. And so there's going to be hard decisions going forward, but we're going to have to make some hard decisions today. I've got two requests in my inbox for SBOs.
Yeah.
So I think for me, I would like to send all those SBOs to you and say, make you the bad guy. Say, we don't have any money.
Perfect. I love being hated. No, uh, no, I mean, that's, that's, that's fine. I mean, you know, there, there are still funding opportunities that are out there. Um, the general fund is scrambling for cash right now. There is no question. We're, when we're talking about this, we're really just talking mostly about the general fund. We're not talking about enterprise funds.
No, I understand that, but that's where I go, that, those are the two requests.
Yeah. And, and those unallocated reserves, I mean, when we're talking about using these unallocated reserves for, for, uh, ongoing expenses, they're gone. They're absolutely gone. There is, I mean, and if you 100% deplete them and they are gone forever, they are gone forever and, and you can't get that back. And it's, it's got to be a cost reduction that is, is impactful enough so that we're not looking at that structural gap hitting again in two years. It's got to be a sustainable plan. We can't just look at the current year. We have, I mean, I, I was thinking about it this morning when I, I was initially interviewed for this job and, uh, Councilmember Mum asked me the question of what do you think the difference between, um, city finances is and financial health is? And it's like, well, you know, you're, you're, you're talking about putting a Band-Aid on something for city finances within the current year. When you're talking about financial, city financial health, you're talking about going to your primary care physician, being proactive about, um, the long-term approach of what is, you're going to experience in three, five, whatever years it is. So that's what we need to be discussing as we're looking at the 2023. We can't just look at it within a silo.
Well, do you think there could be a, um, a hybrid approach where we could do both? In other words, we can, we can put some Band-Aids on right now and plan for the long term?
We're going to have to. I mean, there, there's no, we're, we're going to have to dip into these unallocated reserves. There's, there's no way around it. We're going to have to dip into savings.
Unless we use all ARPA funds for, that would be the Band-Aid.
Even if we use all of the ARPA funds, we're still not there.
Yeah.
So, uh, you know, at the start of COVID, the, the mayor had a hiring freeze in place and I can't remember the term, but also basically a freeze on, on extra spending that, that wasn't planned for. So, you know, very few or no SBOs, that kind of thing. I think those need to go back into place, um, right away in fact. And, and, and I really do hope that we can see some, some identified potential, you know, cost reductions in various departments, you know, to, to match kind of what our need is. But I'm, but my question to you is, should we, would the prudent thing for us to do right now is to, to consider some sort of supplemental budget very, very quickly? Because as you mentioned, we're in quarter four, there's not a lot of time left, but the sooner we make hard decisions, the more we can save. So is that, would that be the prudent course of action?
I, I think that would be, uh, an excellent start. I mean, I think that would be an excellent start to, to have an emergency sort of, um, an, an emergency sort of situation where we need to figure out what, whether that be 15% cost savings of the 25% that you have left in this year. It's a start to, to not have departments looking at their overall budget right now and say, gosh, we've got, you know, $100,000 left in, uh, copy paper. Let's, let's, let's buy the rest of the copy paper so we don't have to buy it next year. Those are the convers- those are the things that like absolutely need to stop. I, I think the fire department did that, um, somewhat at the end of the last year. I think they also had that, um, when, when they were faced with those overtime charges. I think Chief Schaefer did a great job of saying like, okay, we've got to stop all, you know, um, just, just non-necessary, unnecessary purchases. And, and that might be a discussion that, that is, is suggested to, from council to administration of, give us your plan of the immediate of what we're going to do through Q4. Cause we've, I think we've heard- we've heard several times that, you know, there's a plan, there's a plan developing. It's coming. We're going to, we're going to get the plan. But we haven't necessarily got that plan. And now we're looking at Q four, and we're still spending in the exact same way. And we're looking at this recession, and we're looking at a slowdown in sales tax, and we're looking at burning through our one-time cash. And and there's not a whole lot we can do to change in Q four to make a dramatic impact.
This is where I would normally say there's a pill for that, but there isn't. So.
Thank you, Matt.
Super helpful. Great conversation. And we'll be having a lot more of these. And I hope we'll get those proposed cost cuts from the administration.
So Matt had a question for us, and we did not answer it.
Well, so I'm wondering maybe what we do as the finance committee, we we meet as, you know, based on the conversation that we're having here, saying, okay, let's, let's kind of develop a response to this. It sounds like an emergency Q four budget supplementary budget is is of interest to some, if not all, as well as what is going to be the the action plan for covering not just current year deficit, next year deficit, but long-term deficit? And closing that structural gap. But we can meet and then decide and then just develop a response to administration and their finance team.
Is there a way to evaluate fairly quickly what we could cut that's not going to cut essential services, you know, when you start looking at general fund?
Yeah, I think I think that is an exercise best made for administration and the executive team. They are, they are the managers of those departments. Now, while Councilmember Cathcart said, you know, let's see what is what from a policy standpoint is absolutely necessary. Yeah, I think that that's important. But in the in the immediate action that we're needing right here, it is best to go to those managers and say, this is, this is the position that we're in. We are in a crisis. We do not want to sweep you out of the legs and absolutely take, you know, take your, your, every available resource that you need that you're seeing that you've saved for, you know, quarter four expenses. Tell us what's going to happen and tell us how you're going to improve this problem that we're having, whether it be in those four short months or not.
Okay.
But I, you really need to lay it on to them because I think it's unfair to those departments for the seven council members who do not have management oversight over those departments to be making those decisions.
Okay, good. Thanks.
And I'll just share, the finance committee has met, and we've been talking about in all those reserve accounts, how low we are willing to go because we do not want to get to zero. But we have to meet somewhere in the middle because there is no revenue to replace it at this time.
Yeah, and that's, I mean, just covering what we have discussed in level one and level two, if we if we push all of those into unallocated reserves and ARPA, you know, it brings that thirteen point eight million dollar ARPA fund down to four million dollars. It's, it's a big hit. But arguably needed. The unallocated reserves brings that, you know, twelve and a half million dollars down to five point one. Big hit, but arguably needed. But what what are they doing to make the changes so that is not the same conversation in September of next year?
Not not necessarily suggesting this at this point, but is there a way to claw back any of the ARPA money that has been allocated if it has not gone out the door yet?
Yeah. Okay. Yeah. So theoretically, yes. I mean, it has to be a vote by the council. I mean, it's, it's, it has to be approved by a majority. There are, you know, as things as things move, what's going to happen is is the need is going to be less for some things, possibly. You know, again, I've shared the mobile medical one, you know, the mobile medical, you know, now we're talking about that being funded through the commerce funds. Okay, is that an opportunity for us to bring it back? I don't know. Do we want to retool that, the mobile medical, so that it is a piece that is unfunded from the commerce proposal? I don't know. That's, that's a conversation that has to happen within council, given all the other circumstances that we're talking about.
Two quick clarifications. One, I think those are SBOs, so there's probably a five vote to change it.
Right.
And then the second thing is we've talked a little bit interchangeably, the finance committee and the budget work group. So those are two different things, just so people know. The finance committee is all of us, the budget group is three of us. So, but anyway, I'm super happy that we have these numbers and we're engaged in this. And tough work to go. But and again, love to be joined by the administration on it. That'd be awesome. All right. With that, we're getting ready for Labor Day weekend. So everybody enjoy. I'm getting ready to move houses today and tomorrow. So.
Available.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
I don't have a truck.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, we hired somebody. So but there's a lot of packing to do. So please, everyone, take care of yourself, and if you can't take care of someone else, we are adjourned. No meeting Monday.